Call to order the December 12th regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. First order of business, item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We moved item 2.1, student representative reports. And I believe we've got representatives from Irondale and Moundsview. And they've negotiated, Irondale going first. So we've got presentations. Welcome.
I'm Cass.
I'm Grace.
We're from Irondale, so we just have some highlights from December. Have you clicked through? They're not on the TV?
And we don't have screens yet.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, the robotics season.
All right.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, our robotics team had a really great event last weekend. And it was mini trials of different robots they built. And they had their fall fundraiser, which was very successful. And they're looking forward to their bright season ahead.
Our Irondale basketball and wrestling teams are starting off the season with lots of strong energy. And we're excited to cheer on our team this season.
The debate tournament went very well last weekend. One team made it in the top five in the state from Irondale. And three speakers were recognized from Irondale as top individual speakers.
We had our Asian New Year and Native American Heritage celebrations. And some awesome cultural celebrations have happened in the past weeks. And those are some pictures from them.
We just finished our DECA Week of Giving, where we had class competitions for raising money for the holiday season. And we could win different foods for the class that raised the most money. And some classes raised almost $800.
We recently had a student council event, Mike Night. And it was a new event hosted by student council. And we had a great turnout and lots of fun. And hope to do it in the future.
It was very successful and people really liked it. So we're gonna probably do it in the future, for sure. In our upcoming events, we have our seniors to seniors concert on Friday, where the upperclassmen band, choir, and orchestra perform at around noon for typically older members of the community.
We also have the choir concert on Monday night, which will be sung with our varsity choir, nightingales, and concert choir, as well as the elective audition-only groups, Diva, sorry, Diva Belavocce and guys group.
And we have our midwinter art show, which is a great reflection of the artists in the Irondale community with some really cool artwork.
We also have our children's show performances, which we will be touring to local elementary schools in the district.
Yes, we're very excited about those upcoming events. And that is all.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great updates.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Alton, and here I have Moundsview's report for December. So winter sports have officially kicked off. And some few teams that I want to highlight. Our wrestling team is currently ranked third in state. And I would say they have a pretty amazing start to their season. Same goes for boys' and girls' basketball. They've had pretty amazing starts. I also want to shout out girls' and boys' hockey. I believe girls' hockey won their recent game, and the boys won their home opener. And I believe the boys are currently playing Rosemont tonight. So good luck to them. Student council, we're currently having our toy drive, where we encourage students from all the grades to donate. And this is a school-wide competition where the winning grade will receive a popcorn social, popcorn and hot chocolate social. So I feel like this is a pretty good way to encourage many of our students to give back to families in the community. And who doesn't love popcorn and hot cocoa in place of Sixtour? So some events, activities and clubs. Knights Olympiad, they play second in the state, not state tournament, sorry. They play second in the tournament in Wisconsin. And they've had a pretty strong finish against other teams. I also want to highlight a couple of our students from Skills USA, Gloria Lu and Ashley Pennington. They, I believe, were elected for the Skills USA Minnesota State Leadership Team, where they, I believe, planned a leadership conference for Skills USA in the capital. And they advocate for student groups. They'll also be heading to Atlanta, Georgia for the national conference. I think it's great to see Moundsview Mustangs getting represented at the national level. And I mean, you'll have your DECA Week of Giving. We have our DECA Week of Giving, I believe, next week or this week, where we encourage students to bring nonperishable food items. And I believe winners, or we will have a raffle drawing for students. And winners will get merchandise from the DECA store. Yeah, it's funny to see, I think I'm wearing Irondale colors, so I feel like that will benefit me. We also have our concerts going on in our music programs. Moundsview Band had their holiday concert yesterday. And choir and orchestra will be having their concerts next week. I think it's great to have families and students come together and enjoy the holidays. So yeah, that's all I have for tonight, and thank you for your time.
Great updates, and thanks for the presentations. It's fun to see it in real life.
Thank you.
Yes, I love the pictures.
Thanks for making time.
So much.
Thank you, everyone, coming tonight.
We'll move to item 2.2, announcements. Shawna will acknowledge the gifts.
All right, thank you, Jonathan. There were seven gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $4,600. In addition, there were 53 gifts received for the Ralph Rader Food Shop this period for a total of $71,699.30. It is recommended the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Thank you. Additional announcements, upcoming meeting dates, January 4th, 5:00 p.m. a work session of the board. And January 9th, 7:00 p.m., a regular meeting of the board, both here at the district center. Item 2.3, superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you, Jonathan. A couple of updates tonight. First, for those of you in the public who prefer to access your school and district information online, you probably noticed that we've updated our website. So the new website launched since the last board meeting we had. I just wanted to point out a couple of highlights of that updated website. One of the things we had heard from the public is the ability to view multiple calendars. So if I have kids in different schools, now you're able to do that. So by using the filtering, you can actually combine those calendars and look at the events that you're interested in seeing, rather than having to go to each site. The dropdown sections also now include frequently used links for families and staff. So rather than going searching, you can go to the dropdown link, find what you're looking for, navigate a little quicker that way. We've also added translation services for the most common languages spoken in the district. So if you want to access that online and have it translated, that is now available as well. And lastly, but not least, certainly, the platform has now been optimized for mobile viewing. We had a number of people tell us, hey, I'm looking at it on my phone. Could you make that better, the experience better? So that website now has been optimized, which is for mobile viewing, which is what the majority of users said they were actually the tool they were using to access the website. Secondly, tonight, I want to talk a little bit, because it's that time of year, although it's been a little seasonably warm, chilly tonight, but the possibility of winter weather. And I know we sent out some reminders about that. But just for the public, as we hope we do not have to close school, in the event we do, a couple reminders. First, if we are forced to close, there will be no instruction held on a day where we call a snow day. So if we say, today is a snow day, no instruction. And you will get that, and don't expect to have to connect or be online. There may be the possibility, as we've had in the past, where we've had multiple days. When that happens, we can call, the state now allows us to call an e-learning day or a distance learning day. If we do that, that will be communicated. This is a distance learning day, or lots of times that's with cold. Tomorrow will be a distance learning day. We'll announce that so people know those expectations. And obviously, the staff at the buildings are aware and would be communicating that with students and parents as well. One other thing that comes up often, we do not send out, we'll be open tomorrow messages. Now, why do I bring that up? Because as soon as it starts snowing, I start getting emails, kids are calling. Hey, we're gonna have school tomorrow. Unless and until we closed, you won't get a message. So assume that we are in session unless you hear something differently communicated by the school. And then, when we decide that, within 20 minutes of that decision being made, and when we can, especially for something like cold, if we can do that the evening before we will, if it's snow, that's harder to predict. So it could be an early morning message. But as soon as that information is available, that gets out. It's about 20 minutes to push that information out to text, email, and calls. So one thing we would ask the public to do, especially parents or students who are on that, go into parent view and check your information. So if you want those calls, make sure your information is updated and accurate so you don't miss an important announcement like a school closure. So that's it for tonight.
You forgot the most important point, which is who makes the decision?
Yeah.
About school closures.
Yes, I certainly will take responsibility for that. All the fans I make out there every time we have to do that. In consultation with many people, but ultimately, yes, that is my call.
Sure my kids are watching at home.
I was just reminded of the video that Colin had created years ago with Dan Hooverman, our former superintendent, about a Turtle Lake kid who was, you know, his dream was for a day to be the superintendent and make the call in the snow day. Very, very great. We should dig that out.
Thank you.
And move us to item 2.4, which may just filibuster, because I don't think anybody wants Sandra to be done. But we are going to recognize you this evening. I believe we've got at least one member of our community, former board member, who wants to say a few words. And then we're gonna have an opportunity to go around the table and talk about you. It's gonna be awesome. Amy, would you like to join us up here?
I'd love to. Where do you want me to be, here?
Wherever you'd like.
I'd love to be right here.
Want to come back in this chair? We've missed you up here.
Nope, love that chair, all set. You're doing a great job.
Super.
I just wanted to say a big thank you to Sandra Westerman and her 12 years of service, which is extraordinary. And I had the honor of serving with you for eight of those years. And I just was always impressed with your professionalism, your sense of humor, always prepared, and just really a champion for the district in every way possible. This job is unique in that you are elected to it, but it really is a job. It's incredibly time-consuming. And we were talking outside, and you were sharing that you started this role when your daughter finished preschool, and she's graduating high school. So it's been her entire academic career in Moundsview, that you've been doing this job many, many days a week, responding to things, always being ready to go, and just really keeping the best interest of the district at heart at all times. And I just really respect and admire your work. I really appreciate your work ethic. I really appreciate your sense of humor. And I'm just thankful that you were able to give all this time and energy and resources and to give of your family's time, because it really does impact a whole family when you spend a lot of time around this board table. And it's a lot of work. And you've done it with grace, and you've done an excellent job. And we will miss you. But I just really wanted to let you know that all the work that you did matters so much. And you made a huge impact, not only on your daughter and sons' academic career here, but so many children. And the community really thanks you. And I wanted to take a second to tell you that. And I hope that you have an awesome time. I am gonna talk you into volunteering with me. So I will be contacting you next week, and we will be figuring that out. I look forward to working with you in a different capacity, but thank you so much for your work. You've done an excellent job. And the community is better for it. So thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for the lovely krumkakka that you gave me in the hallway. It's extraordinary.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
Who'd like to go next? We could go in like order of something. Great.
Okay.
So Sandra, I remember when I reached out six years ago, when I was thinking about running for the board. And you were so honest and transparent about the role. At first, I didn't think I was qualified enough to do the job. But you definitely instilled in me that I was. And you just shared your perspective and just your experience. And I just appreciate that as I continue this work. But also, I just appreciate your professionalism, as Amy stated. And you always keep us on task. So between you and Jonathan, it's like if we're veering off this way, you're like, no, no, no. Let's, out of the weeds, let's talk about what we need to focus on. And appreciate that. You always ask great questions. And you always clarify for the community about things that we've talked in great depth at our work sessions, but you always remind everyone that, hey, as we've talked more about this, it's not like we're just voting on this budget just like that. You provide clarity and so forth. So just want to say thank you. I appreciate you. I hope you enjoy your time. I'm sure it'll get consumed by others, and Amy now getting you to volunteer with her. But just thank you for all the years of dedication and service to the Moundsview School District and the community.
Thank you.
We can go in order, huh? Sandra, thanks so much for your time and your effort for the board, but also for the individual relationships that you've established with each one of us. And I really appreciate that. It's been a great honor to serve with you the last four years and learn from you. I feel like that's been a great experience and has really helped me grow as a board member. And I just wish you well as you're moving on to the next phase, whether it's Amy or whoever is dragging you to something else, or whether it involves pickleball or travel. We're two kids at two schools very close to my heart. So being a Tommy myself and having a wildcat myself, I think you'll have a lot of fun just encouraging your kids at that next stage, too. So thanks again for your service. It's made a huge impact on our community as a whole, but on me as a school board member as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Now, I want to express my congratulations to you. Many of you probably don't know, but I have actually known Sandra for quite a while. We go back to when our daughters were in elementary school. And they were on the same Girl Scout troop. So before they were Girl Scouts, I guess, because they had to be Brownies and grow from there. But so I got a chance to meet her then, and I was always very impressed with her focus on service, right? She's always served the community as long as I can remember. And I was always inspired by that. And when the students came to me a few years ago and asked me to run for something, she was one of the first people that I reached out to, to ask about the school board and her experience. And I will always be grateful for that and the advice that you gave me and just the wisdom that you shared. And it's been a pleasure to serve with you. As I was telling you when we walked in, I wish we would have had more years to serve together. But I know that you're...
Should've started earlier.
I know. It's on you, you... It's all on me, for sure. But I am very, very happy. And again, I want to thank you for encouraging me to run and to be a part of this, because it does matter. And I would have never known the sacrifice that you did have for the community and for our district, had I not joined this. Because I think you get a different perspective, of course, sitting around this table with the brilliant minds that I get to work with. So I just, again, appreciate you. I appreciate everything that you have given to the community. And I know you're always a phone call away, even on your travels. And I just look forward to seeing all the great photos that you're gonna take on your travels. You deserve it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, before I joined the school board, Sandra was actually a colleague and a friend of mine. We knew each other for a number of years. And she actually recruited me to run for school board. So my comments might not be as kind, but... Only kidding. Sandra, you know, you're our longest-serving school board member. You've guided this district through many waters, mostly calm, occasionally some bumpy stuff, school start times, COVID, levy battles, you name it. But I always appreciated Sandra asked very tough questions of administrators, principals, teachers, the school board of itself. She required us to think, to listen, to explain, to look at our positions, and really look at it from all points of view. Sandra is a lawyer, and she's very lawyerly in her approach to questions. But when she looks at the district, she's really motherly. And she really cares about the district. She has an amazing breadth of knowledge coming from the district. She went K through 12, graduated from Irondale High School, returned here to raise her kids here, a student, parent, active volunteer on so many boards, so many different things. She always brought a wonderful perspective to the school board and a high level of professionalism. So thank you for your hours spent serving our students, parents, and teachers. It's appreciated, and thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra, it has been an honor and a privilege to sit right next to you for the last six years. Like everyone has said, you lead with your heart, you lead with integrity, you'll do the right thing no matter what, every single time, which I really appreciate about you. It has been just so nice to get to know you and get to learn from you. And we have some big shoes to fill with you not being here. And I'm a little nervous about that on the 9-16 board, but I know that I can, you know, reach out if I need something. But you have been an absolute, there have been some great times on the school board and some tough times on the school board, and some crazy times that we'd rather not have again on the school board. And through all of that, you just made sure that we were taking care of students, and students came first. And you just stick to that no matter what. And I really appreciate that about you. So thank you.
Thank you.
I usually like to have the last word. I am gonna give you the last word on this agenda item. And the board has done a great job of covering so many of the thoughts that I have. As I look at a list of board members from 2016, like, they've all abandoned me. Like, I'm the last person standing. I'm getting a complex over here. So we've served together for nine years. And you have been, I think Amy said this, extraordinary. Your leadership, your thoughtfulness, the way you approach the work, has made this a better board. I think it's been said, like, what are we gonna do? Like, I actually have written down WW's essay, what would Sandra ask? Ourselves. To think about, you're one of the last legal minds on the board, like, that perspective has been so important. Somebody mentioned you showing up, you know, not just as a professional with that lens, but as a parent, as a community member, as somebody who grew up in this district. All of those things. This board has been at its best when it is populated by people of different perspectives. Yours has mattered. And then the last thing I would just say is that the friendship that we've built during the really tough times that Jim highlighted, that we all have PTSD over some of it, you've often been my first call. I'm sorry, Chris.
It's okay.
Right, like, as we tackle the big work of a major institution that matters to so many people, your service has been incredibly valuable. We appreciate you. You did tell me you didn't want a plaque. So I think she said, can I get something tasteful?
I kinda did.
I kinda did.
Hopefully, this meets the mark.
Oh, that's exactly...
Acknowledge your service.
Show us.
Yes, show us. I want a crystal.
Something for my desk.
It's lovely.
We appreciate you.
So, gosh. It's okay, take your time.
I just want to know if I have dibs now on asking the first question.
Well, Sandra should determine that. So, I mean, I started this work when my daughter was just finishing preschool. And she's now graduating from high school. So it has been an incredible ride. I didn't think I was gonna get emotional tonight, because I'm really happy to be done. But it has been just an incredible honor to do this work, to sit at the table with each of you. I respect all of you so much. I appreciate the friendships that we have developed. I appreciate the staff leadership that Chris, you, and your cabinet bring forward, and the passion that this district has. So I really was hoping to say all these incredible things about the work that I've done on this board, but you all did that for me. And the time, so many things this board has been through since I joined this board in 2011. Big things that this district has done and changed. School start times, many renewals of operating levies, bringing those levies together into, you know, one levy, and really putting this district in good financial footing for the years moving forward. Those are all things I'm really proud of. But the thing I'm most proud of is this board. And it's how this board operates. And it is something I'm very proud of. And I, you know, I didn't make that. I inherited... I, you know, I didn't make that. I inherited that. In this district, you know, I come in, I came and sat at this table, and I remember doing this 12 years ago, when Lisa Schoback left the board. And everyone was going around, and I was, it was just, it was very emotional then. And now here I am on the receiving end of that. And it's just really amazing. So thank you all, and it's been a great ride. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move us on to approval of the consent agenda. Do you entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries. Moved item 4.1, ratification of employment contracts. Good evening.
Good evening. So tonight, I'm bringing forward two new labor agreements. The first is clerical. So we negotiated and came to a tentative agreement with our clerical staff in the district, represented by SEIU Local 284. This is approximately 54 or so clerical employees in the district. The proposed settlement covers 23, 24, and 24, 25, and includes a 6.75% increase in each year of the contract, a slight change to lead differential, who are the lead building administrative assistants in each building, a slight increase in longevity, and then an increase in the 4th would be in the second year of the contract. They have voted and approved this contract, and tonight we're asking for your approval as well.
Questions for Julie? I would entertain a motion to approve the 2023-2025 clerical agreement and 2023-2025 principal labor agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I would just add a huge thanks to Julie, you and your team for pulling this together. It feels like every day we're reading about, you know, labor challenges in the marketplace. And our ability to, you know, maintain those relationships and get us to this point is part of what Sandra just talked about with regards to this board and this leadership team. So thanks for all the work that you and your crew do.
I have one just minor issue. I just was noticing on the subject line of 4.1A, it's just a typo, I think, but it stated it's the custodian labor agreement.
Sarah corrected that.
Oh, I didn't catch that.
The physical, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay.
That's the attention to detail. We're gonna have to, like, sharpen our-
Sharpen our skills.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries. We'll move to item 4.2, certification of the final property tax levy.
Go back.
She didn't do principal. She just did clerical.
Oh, I did both of them. Both of them were moved. We'd love to hear about it.
Sure.
We got all the notes in the works.
So we approved in agreement with principals as well. We have about 28 principals in the district. Again, for the contract years 23, 25. Their contract includes a 5.75% increase in year one and a 6% in year two. We did add longevity increments, which is something this group has not had, but similar to our teachers, added that really is a way to look at retention and recruitment as well. And then a slight increase in the 403B in year two, and an increase in the technology stipend. And so thank you for your approval.
They have been approved. We could certainly have discussion on it. We can retract the approval. All sorts of options up here tonight. But appreciate the work on that as well.
Yep.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Now we'll move to item 4.2, property tax levy. Denise, good evening.
Annually, school districts must follow a process to certify the school portion of the local property taxes to be collected. The next step in the levy's limitation and certification process is for the school board to certify a final 2024 property tax levy. The final certification is then forwarded to Ramsey County for processing the final property tax statements. The tax statements are mailed out in March of 2024. The property tax revenue is collected in 2024 and will be available for the district for the 2024-25 school year. Final taxes for pay 24 are $63,688,606.20, which is an increase of approximately $2.7 million or approximately 4.56% greater than the pay 2023 final. The general fund is going to be $48,163,249.06. The community service fund will be $1,099,943.97. And the debt service is $14,425,413.17. The final proposed school tax levy is $63,688,606.20. And we're asking for approval this evening.
Any questions?
Maybe just one comment. We did have a truth and taxation hearing this evening at 6 o'clock before, you know, it's our annual truth and taxation hearing. That's open for the citizens to come and ask questions, learn more about the levy. And we didn't have anyone show up tonight. So I just wanted to let everyone know that, who's watching on television.
That's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Any other questions? Would entertain a motion to approve final taxes levied in '23, collected in 2024, at $63,688,606.20.
So moved. Seconded.
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries. We'll move to item 4.3, non-resident enrollment options for 2024-2025.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about this one. Thank you. Tonight, as we do annually, we're bringing forward a review of our enrollment. And tonight, we specifically want to talk about non-resident students. So a little bit of history for the public. Back in 2016, the district made the decision to close schools to non-resident enrollment based on the current enrollment at that time, as well as the increases that were being projected for future resident enrollment, increasing birth rates, housing turnover, and new developments that had been planned in our attendance area. At that time, the non-resident enrollment percentage was 9% across our district. Since that time, the non-resident enrollment percentages have changed. And at the elementary, it is now down to 3%. High school non-resident percentage remains up at 8%. And what's happened is students who have been in our elementary schools, age through the system, they're progressing into the secondary, our enrollment numbers at the secondary schools have been maintained, in fact, grown even, while enrollment at the elementary level is now down relative to prior years. So there's a number of factors that contribute to that trend. As I mentioned, current non-resident students have aged through our system and are now through the elementary into the secondary, middle schools, and high schools. We do currently have lower birth rates across the state, which is resulting in fewer elementary students coming to our schools, higher mortgage rate and rental rates. Those are also impacting our families, preventing some number of families from moving into the district. The other thing, as we were having conversation, there's just a lack of housing supply. So fewer homes for sale. Not only are the interest rates out, fewer homes. Families are aging in place. They're not interested in going to buy a new home at a higher interest rate. They're staying in the home that they have, even empty nesters. And as of today, although there are plans, no additional students yet, the one development we're watching is Rice Creek Commons. And that will have an impact on some of our schools moving forward. But throughout all of this, our total enrollment really has remained high at our secondary schools. That's evidence, the average combined high school graduating classes, when you take the Irondale and Mountsview students together, are in excess of 900 students for the next four years, while our incoming elementary classes have been under 800 students for the last couple of years. The target number of 800 was suggested by Hazel Reinhardt, the former state demographer, when she did our enrollment study, and in fact, is part of our district operational goal, as we're watching those numbers moving forward. So at this time, in order to address the difference between our elementary and secondary enrollment, we want to make sure that we can continue to maintain those programs and services that our students, parents, and staff have become accustomed to. When we evaluated our enrollment projections, we determined that at this time, we believe there is a limited, and I'm going to make sure I stress that, limited capacity to allow for some additional non-resident students to enroll grades K5. We would not be accepting any enrollments at the secondary, not middle school, not high school, but at elementary, we believe we do have some limited capacity. The exact capacity is going to vary from school to school, will also likely vary from grade level to grade level based on enrollment at each of our schools and programs. And as we go through that, more information would be shared with the public. We feel we can have all of that ready by the end of the month to be out and publicly addressed. For our purposes tonight, we really have to be in compliance with the Department of Education's timelines and expectations around non-resident enrollment. So we are going to recommend that the board, for this year only, approve a resolution to accept limited non-resident applications for students' grades K5 for the 2024-25 school year. With that, I'm happy to answer questions or take comments.
Questions for Superintendent Lennox? And I know we talked about this at length last Thursday, but Sandra.
Being the historian of the board, my last meeting, I think it was, Chris, I love that you provided this historic article from School Talk, spring 2016, when we decided to close enrollment at that time. So I'm thinking back to, you know, when I started this board work in 2011, we did have open enrollment. It was limited. And then, you know, we were kind of, the population bubbled up, and we were like, we have to close this down, because we've got our own residents to take care of, and our facilities are getting full. And now we're kind of at, like you said, those kids have starting to age up into the secondary schools. We've got some space now in the lower levels. So I see it kind of like, we're going back, like, back to the future. But again, like, a limited, very limited, correct?
Yep.
And as just a one-year, a year-to-year, I maybe should say, a year-to-year decision.
Yeah. And to reinforce that, Sandra, annually, the school board, I mean, we bring this to you annually. For the last several, we've remained closed. What we're doing is we're looking at that. If we accept those limited applications in and fill up some of that space, and the families that come to us usually stay, right? Whether that's resident or non-resident, we really do not see, I mean, assuming they stay in the system, they'll just age through. So we won't be open on an ongoing basis if we allow for these limited residents. So it would be an annual conversation, but it may not be open in the future. We may well be closed moving forward.
And what's the percentage you said we currently have, open enrolled?
8% at the high schools, 3% at the elementary. And really, grade level by grade level, we were required to have a minimum of 1%. There are some grade levels that are at that 1%. And that has been done through siblings and staff members, children entering the system.
I think back to some of the historical stuff, too. I was on the facilities task force that started back in 2016. And we took such a deep dive, really deep dive, into enrollment numbers. And I think that then coming on the board after that, really seeing the attention that's paid to really watching those enrollment numbers, how many students we're capturing, how many, like you said, births we're seeing, and, you know, what kind of a capacity we have. I appreciate that analytics and that really looking year by year. I know that the facilities task force then, you know, led to the bond request for our community. And some of that, like you said, was based on the fact that at that point in time, we believed Rice Creek Commons, you know, could have families at this point in time. And so our facilities is also a component of that, that I appreciate that you and your staff are watching. Our facilities, our staff members, you know, we want to retain the staff that we have, and we want to continue to keep our families who live in the district, you know, here, and continue to serve them. And sometimes by allowing a few more non-resident enrollments, that can help meet that need. So I appreciate just that, you know, like you were saying in the work session, we dig into those numbers and really look at projections. And it's been quite a few years of looking at that, and how much that's changed. When we looked at those numbers in 2016, we didn't see this, quite this big a dip in birth rates at this point in time. So having responded to that leads to different decisions at each point in time.
And for clarity, and for those listening, thank you for that, Heidi. We're not looking to grow the district. We're looking to maintain the programs and services we have. And so where we have some space to be able to maintain the staff we have, to maintain the programs we offer, really is an opportunity here that we want to make sure that we're sustaining and maintaining. We're not looking to become a larger school district. We want to maintain what we have.
Are questions? Non-entertain a motion to approve the non-resident enrollment options, be open to grades K5 for the school year 2024-2025, for the adoption of the attached resolution.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Are none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries. We will move to item 5.1, district operational plan, goal update early childhood, kindergarten report. We've got a whole crew this evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'll be providing a report on part of this year's district operational plan, goal of developing a coordinated outreach plan that builds connections and promotes programs with our early childhood and kindergarten families. Tonight, we have Peter Leatherman, CEO of Morris Leatherman, and he's going to share the results of a recently conducted survey of district families. And this work will help us identify specific areas of focus as we work on the school throughout the school year. So tonight, it's just one part of kind of a multi-part plan for the year. So.
Take it away.
Thank you, Peter.
All right. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening to go over the results. Just to review with everybody, we spoke with 500 randomly selected residents across the district that had a preschool child under the age of five. Telephone interviews were conducted between November 2nd and the 17th. Average interview time was six minutes. Non-response rate was very low. These folks really wanted to talk. The younger the parent, the more likely they are to talk on the phone, plus or minus, it was 4%. And the 500 sample is always projectable to plus or minus 4.5% in 95 out of 100 cases. To put up a few demographics of the profile of the sample, 31% have lived in the district for five years or less. Well, 33% have been in the district for over 11 years. Typical parent of a preschool child's been in the district roughly about seven, seven and a half years. 37% were 18 to 34-year-olds, 47% 35 to 44, and then 16% were over 45. The typical parent of a preschool child was college grad, just short of being a college graduate, 48%. That includes masters, doctorates, every sort of level of college graduation. 22% were high school graduates, and then 29% had some experience with college, albeit short of graduation. Looking at the ethnicity, 62% indicated that they were white, 17% black or African American, 9% Asian, 8% Hispanic Latino, 1% each Hawaiian Pacific Islander and American Indian, and 3% indicated two or more ethnicities. And then women outnumbered men in the sample by 20 points, which is typical. Mothers are much more likely to answer their phone, and we don't try to balance the sample like we typically do with a community survey. So looking at the results, a few questions upfront. What are these parents' familiarity with the community education program? 62% indicate they're at least somewhat familiar with the program, 38% not to or not at all. all. This is a potential area, as we talked about in the work session, for the district to concentrate on, and that's driving up familiarity. This will be a key constituency for community education in the next, you know, 13 to 18 years of the child's life. And that one in five of very familiar, it has a potential, probably should be closer to 40 or 50%. It was asked in the work session if there were any differences on demographics, especially on ethnicity, looking at this question, and there really aren't if we combine the very and somewhat. There is a difference if we look at the very familiar versus the somewhat familiar, and that would be amongst Asian and Pacific Islanders, we're much more likely to indicate that they were very familiar with the program. That's really the only outlier. But in combining that very and somewhat, there was no statistically significant difference between the groups. Now, keep in mind that you have 38% indicate that they're not, two or not at all. We asked folks to evaluate. So, this is not only what they've experienced, but what they've seen or what they've heard. And how would they evaluate the quality of community education programs? Seventy, 7% rated them favorably, only 9% said only fair, but 14% indicated that they were unsure. This will probably come as the challenge also coming out, and that's a challenge for every school district, whether we're talking about community education programs, ECFE, or the overall quality of education to K-12 students. And that's the enthusiasm, how to convert folks. You don't have to, you don't actually have to convert people from an unfavorable position to a favorable position. How do you intensify the favorable to make folks move from the good to excellent category? Have they participated in an ECFE program in the past two years? Thirty-four percent indicated that they had. Of those, of that 34%, 90% rated the experience favorably, only 10% said only fair. Continuing with the ECFU users, 93% indicate that they trust the teachers to do what is best for the children, and 91% would recommend the program to others. So, they really do, once they're in the program, they become a proponent of the program. And keep in mind, one of the key ways of communication for this group is word of mouth. Always has been. It's been a foundational, positive communication network in this district. In other districts, it can be a poisonous network. In this district, the word of mouth, the grapevine, especially amongst younger parents and elementary school parents, has always been a positive. So, they really can become the proponents of the program. What have they participated in? Sixty-nine percent indicated that they participated in weekly classes lasting for six weeks or longer, while 52% indicated that they participated in a one-time event. What's the primary reason for using the ECFE program? The next few questions are open-ended. They can tell us anything, and we collapse them down into categories. There are four key themes for the reasons for enrolling your child in the program. Early learning opportunities for the child at 26%, socialize the child at 20%, receive parenting and developmental skills for the parent in the program at 18%, and 12% looked at it as a social aspect for them to meet other parents in the district. What do they like most about the program? You'll see in all the programs that we test, the teachers are really the key asset of all the programs in the community ed. 20% indicate the teachers, 17% like most, the social aspect of meeting other parents, and then the variety of activities were the three items that hit double digits. What do they like least? If you go right down to the bottom and add the unsure, you have two-thirds of people indicating they're unsure, or there's nothing they dislike about the program. The only item that hits double digits is the inconvenient schedule, with one in seven of these parents indicating that it is something they like least. We'll go a little bit more in-depth as we look at barriers for times of day versus weeks and those sorts of things for the schedule aspect of the program. Do they view the ECFE program as offering different activities from what you would usually undertake with your child? So, I mean, is there something that is, there's an advantage to taking it? It's not something you would typically do? Absolutely. Four out of five parents indicate, users indicate that that's the case. These folks do prefer more of a commitment than when we do community education surveys, especially when you're looking at adult enrichment programs or youth enrichment programs. You typically have more of the one-time event, the limited time commitments. These folks are much more interested in a more long-term commitment. Forty-seven percent indicate a six-week class, 24% indicate a program lasting the school year, and only 18% said a one-time event. So, if we flip this and now look at those who have not participated in an ECFE program, that's 66%. Have they ever participated in the past? 22% indicate that they had. So, the total reach of the ECFE program with this group of parents is right about 50%, just short of 50%. Why did they stop taking the ECFE program? There's no problem with the program. The child aged out. They got older, and so, they just aged out. What was the primary reason for not taking an ECFE class for those that have never taken a class? It is the modern society issue. Too busy, not enough time. Then you have 19% indicate the child's too old, 18% not interested. Really, the first portion that the district can impact, you can't give people back time, is the awareness level. One in 12 indicated that they weren't aware of the program. So, that would be a potential opportunity. Flipping over to the preschool and pre-kindergarten programs during the past two years, 37% indicated that they had participated in the program, 97% rate the program favorably. Once again, more good than excellent by two to one, very little unfavorable, only 2% only fair. What's the primary reason for using the preschool and pre-kindergarten program? This folks resonated on two answers primarily. It's a preparation for school at 38% and early learning opportunities. The socialization drops on this one as opposed to what we saw in the ECFE results. What do they like most? It's the teachers, all the way up to 27%, and then the curriculum. Everything else falls to single digits. What do this group like least? Actually, you have almost 80% indicating they're either unsure, but 71% say nothing. Nothing hits double digits. What leads the list is the inconvenient schedule, but on this one, it's half the level of the inconvenient schedule for ECFE parents at 7%. What's their perception? The same questions we ask ECFE parents. These parents are even more enthusiastic. Ninety-eight percent indicate that they trust the teachers in the program to do what's best for the children, and 98% would recommend the program to other parents. Going back to those who have not used the program, 24% indicated they had in the past. This one, we actually get just over 50% of the total amount of parents indicating that they either have or are currently using the preschool or pre-kindergarten program. Why did they stop using the preschool and pre-kindergarten program? Once again, the child aged out. Nothing to do with the program. If they were, if they're former users, it's simply time and the age of the child that caused them to not participate anymore. What's the primary reason for not taking an EC, or, this should be, not taking a preschool or pre-kindergarten program? On this one, the age comes into play, because the schedule and too busy, not enough time, you kind of, this is a more different program than ECFE. So, 38% indicate their child's too young, 17% the child's too old, and one in 10 indicate that they are going elsewhere. Now, factors that limit enrollment or participation, we went through and asked, does this limit your enrollment or participation? A lot, some, not too much, or not at all. I have a rate on the chart, the a lot and some, with a hierarchy based on the a lot. You don't have anything that hits 50, 60% as a barrier to participation. We don't have the one thing on the list that would, if we just would have put up not enough time, too busy, that would have collectively come together. You do, though, the top three all kind of revolve around that schedule piece. The times of day, the start and end times of the program, and the days of the week. About one in 10 parents indicate that it has, it limits enrollment or participation. Between 30 and 35% indicates that it limits it at least somewhat. Then we go down the list, from lack of interest, in fourth place is lack of information. As a primary a lot, it's only 4% include the sum. It does get to 23%. So, it is another opportunity for community education to share the programs to these young parents. And then, we go down the list, all the way down to registration procedures are not an issue for this group. Where are folks getting their information? 26% from the district website, 23% from the mailed catalog, and then district newsletter and email newsletter at 15 and 14%. What's the most effective method of reaching these folks? Keep in mind, these are younger parents, and this might be counterintuitive to a lot because you do have an equal split. If we just look at this print versus electronic, the electronic portion, the district website, the e-newsletter, and social media, 51% of young parents prefer some method of electronic communication about the programs. On the flip side, you do have 45% indicating they want something in their hands in order to receive information. So, even with this group, much to the chagrin of communication across the state, as they hope to go electronic, you still have groups of people, insignificant groups of people, that want something in their hands. Looking at familiarity with the kindergarten program, now, keep in mind, this sample, I mean, we had the birth records, the census birth records. I think some of these parents just became parents in August. I mean, they're very new. So, familiarity with the kindergarten program, especially with the newer parents, is going to be limited. But probably a holistic approach to ECFE into preschool, pre-kindergarten, into kindergarten, and raising familiarity across the board, because at this point, 52% indicate they're somewhat familiar, one in five indicate that they're very familiar with the kindergarten program. Of those that indicate that they have some familiarity with the program, it's overwhelmingly positive. 95%, only 2% said only fair. How likely are they to send their child to these programs? 24% said they're very likely to send their child to an ECFE program. 39% very likely to send them to a preschool, pre-kindergarten, 52% to kindergarten, the kindergarten program. Now, keep in mind, in this mix, you're going to have certain groups of parents that no longer have children at the ECFE level, so that's going to limit the amount. Coming in the discussion of the work session and looking at the, we had 20% that said that they were not at all likely to send their child to the kindergarten program, that one in five we talked about. At this point in time, there were no demographic differences outside of the child was two years or younger. So, it was a very new parent as opposed to having a three, four, or five-year-old in the mix at this point in time. So, I think there's more probably flexibility. It's not like the child, the parent's going to be making a decision for the next school year. Do they have a child in the Mounds View Elementary Schools? Because they have young children and have children already in the schools, just short of half indicated they did at 46%. What's their rating of the quality of education in kindergarten? 90% favorable, 2% said only fair. And the perception of the kindergarten program, the trust in the teachers to do what is best, once again, very high at 88%, and 85% would recommend the kindergarten program to other parents. So, that's what I have, if you want to...
I'll just add, of course, you can ask some questions, but Carl mentioned that this is a year-long DOP goal, and we're part of a larger team that includes the two kindergarten center principals and the early childhood director. We're going to be back in the spring. We're going to be meeting throughout the winter and evaluating our current outreach opportunities and events and efforts. We're going to identify new ways to expand them and bring those to you. I believe it's in the April 23rd school board meeting. So, the work of this goal, many strategies toward the one goal, but the Morris Leatherman survey results were an important part for us to understand, to identify the reasons why families are choosing to take advantage of these programs or not. So, I'm sure, yep, if you have any questions for Peter or us?
Just a quick question, Peter. You mentioned on Thursday night kind of how excellent has gone a little bit out of style in some of these surveys. Can you speak to that a little bit? Because we lump excellent and good together in a lot of those numbers.
Absolutely. And we traditionally always lump the excellent and good with, whether it's quality of life, quality of education, quality of program, what have you. What differentiates school districts is the amount of excellence. You know, as those that have heard me talk, I've been doing this 30 years, Minnesotans are difficult people to get enthusiastic about a lot of things. Oftentimes, you, it's always funny, we'll have a, we'll ask the quality of life question, and they rate it good. And you ask folks, what would you do to make it excellent? And about 25 to 30%, you can count on saying, nothing. Good's good enough. It's kind of just that, it's that Minnesota ethos, so it's difficult. But what we've seen post-pandemic across the state, and it doesn't matter if it's the city, the school district, the legislature, whatever, people have shifted from excellent to good. Some have made the slide from good to only fair. That's where the concern really lies. You actually, you know, I think when I presented the, your overall district results last year, you were the only district that maintained its pre-pandemic excellent ratings that we've done surveys for across the state. And you still remain the one district. Most districts, the decline is somewhere between 25 up to almost 50% decline.
Thank you. Other questions?
I just had a question about the communications, because it sounded like, again, based on the survey results, right? The district website is the source that's most effective for communication, and it's also the most used. And I know Superintendent, you talked earlier about, you know, revamping, and there's been a lot of updates to the website. I'm just curious what kind of plans we have to kind of increase the information that's available, right? So that we can target those who maybe aren't informed and aren't seeking those programs today.
I would say, first off, just to lead into what the specifics are, this district actually led, did one of the first thing, 15, 20 years ago, with the shorter newsletters, with pushing people to the website from the mailing, because that will engage people. If you're just a parent sitting there, you're probably not going to click on the district website to just go inform yourself. You could, but this district made it, and now I've seen districts go even further with QR codes and those sorts of things. So, the mailing then links, and you can make people go from reactive to proactive. That's what I would say. But this district was always on the cutting edge of getting people onto the electronic.
Well, and the nice thing about websites, too, is it's different than a publication. Websites are never done, so there's always room to improve and to continue it. But to answer your question, I really think is one of the many pieces that our committee's going to have to tackle, which is taking the information we got from the survey and take a look at, well, what does our website say? What's missing? What's lacking? Where can we drive people there more? But I do appreciate the fact that this is a group of people that want still something in their hands, and they're going to go search for it electronically. It's got to be complete and informative in both places. But let's have us back in the spring, and we'll tell you specifically the before and after of our electronic communication plan.
Well, this is the first time we've done this specific survey, correct? Is this something we plan to do on a cycle so that we have some longitudinal data?
Well, as, having this as a baseline would be very informative, but yeah, you're right. We haven't done it, and I'm not sure I've asked you this question, but do you have comparatives of our questions to other, have other districts lately done the same set of questions?
Not to this level. They will go in-depth on, say, ECFE or preschool, not this comprehensive look at early learning programs like you have.
Okay.
And just to comment that early childhood and pre-K is a very important priority for the board. We put it on our district operating plan. I believe the numbers have shown us, and I think, you know, those of us who have the experience, our early childhood and pre-K programs are excellent. We have wonderful teachers, we have parents that are satisfied and happy, and the state has been a little more generous recently to funding these programs. So, it's very important we get the right people in the seats, and we also have to make it very convenient, especially for people who work a lot, that need to get into those seats, and we do need to communicate stronger to them. But if we are going to meet our reading goals in third grade and fourth grade and those such things, and math, the early childhood and the pre-K are very important. This board has recognized it, the state has recognized it, and I appreciate everybody's good work in here because this is extraordinarily important as we move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right. Great presentation. Thanks for the work.
Thank you.
We'll take us to item 5.2, Updates. We'll take us on to 5.2, Updates. We'll start with AMSD Legislative, Mr. Demay. Feels like we just got done with the session, now we're gearing up for another one.
Well, I had a, two things. As one is, we did have a presentation from the state demographer and last Friday, and birth rates are down, and it's something that we do have to plan on. So it's something, you know, as I said, we're looking at right now, a lot of folks are looking at, that what we're looking going forward is probably having a lot less kids out there to deal with. It's not a lot, but some. And, you know, when you get ahead of these things, that's a smart thing to do. AMSD, you know, we're gearing up for legislative sessions starting February. You know, the big focus for us is always funding. We want some increases on inflationary things. We want early childhood, more money. We want money to fully fund the REED Act. There's just a whole lot of things we're interested in, and the state's been exceedingly generous lately, and we look forward to them continuing along with that, because some of this money is continuing, some of it's one-time money, to be aware of that. We're also asking for enhanced school safety funds, give us a little more flexibility what we do with our bonding and our building funds, a little more flexibility on increased school safety levy. You know, we're also looking at enhancing local control. The great thing about going up to the Capitol is that usually when we get more money, we get more mandates. It's just kind of how it works, but, you know, we always try to balance that with local control. I think we are all in agreement that the best way to have student-centered living is through, student-centered learning is through local control of the school boards. We're also asking the governor and legislature to address the educator workforce shortage. We see shortages on the horizon. Our district has been very fortunate. We've been able to attract a lot of teachers. Others are still struggling to get teachers, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of good and innovative ideas in our legislative platform to look at that. So that's what I have.
Thanks, Jim. Move to Northeast Metro, 916.
So went to my last 916 board meeting last week, and, you know, the highlights there, we approved the 2024 meeting calendar, which is the first Wednesday of each month, with the exception of January, which they back up to be the third Wednesday of January, so boards can appoint their 916 representative. I have passed those board dates on to Shana, assuming she is going to continue on with that, that direction. And, let's see, the, they did, the superintendent did report that the 916 dashboard is now, is now accessible to the special education directors at each district? You've heard about that? Okay. And she, they did say that wait lists are not quite ready, but they're going to be included soon. So they'll have access to the wait lists specifically. And superintendent meeting with member superintends this week? Has that already happened? Tomorrow? Okay. And I think they, we did just do an overview of kind of the strategic plan for the year and kind of where things are at and the progress being made against that strategic plan. So seven of the, there are 26 benchmarks for the year. Seven of them have been completed, with the remaining 73%, you know, in progress, much as you would expect mid-year. So all, all things are, look just lovely there. So that's it.
All right. Great. Item 6.1, School Board Member Reports. Does anybody have anything to share?
I was just going to echo, our Irondale reps covered a couple of the events that I was able to attend recently. I went to the Native Heritage Celebration at Irondale, which is a first for them. They actually founded a Native Student Union this year, and it was amazing to see the students share about their heritage and with lots of pride. And then after our work session last week, Diane and I were able to hit the last part of the Asian New Year's. We, we were able to get there for the food, so that was key. We missed the presentation because of our work session, but Vichai, the principal over there, made sure he saved us some noodles. And just, I went last year, and I would say there were about twice as many people this year. It was just amazingly well-attended. And they mentioned the seniors-to-seniors concert. I've been attending for years. Yes, I do have white hair, but anyone of any age is welcome to attend the seniors-to-seniors concert at Irondale on Friday. Starts with caroling at noon, and then the student performances of the band choir and orchestra start at 12:30, and it's always just a great event. They do bus seniors in from several different housing facilities in the area, but anyone of any age is welcome.
And on the note of seniors, I did want to just commend our career resource professionals, right, at the high schools. I feel like they have been doing an excellent job keeping the senior parents updated on the FAFSA and all this cra, all these crazy changes that they're making. I don't know how they're keeping up with all these updates, but I just want to say, if, if your parents out there and you have seniors, please make sure you're checking your emails, because they are doing an excellent job of keeping us up to date as we go through this crazy process with FAFSA and getting our students off to college. So I just wanted to commend them and give them a special shout-out for all the work they're doing.
Great. Any other reports?
Well, I got to see some hockey, got to see some hoop, but most importantly, to participate in the help along with the Relf Reader Holiday Toy Drive, Operation Hope. Once again, the students, the staff, our community rallies for Relf Reader all the time, and it's an excellent program we can be proud of. But the generosity of the people in my, our district always really touches me, so thank
Well, Sandra, I promised you the last word at your last meeting, so if you want to give that word and gavel us out.
All right. The meeting is adjourned. Yay.